All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Caroline County Planning Commission, dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Before we get going with our business, just make the announcement, and I'm sure everyone already knows, of the passing of our friend and former member of the County Planning Commission, Mr. George Weaver. Mr. Weaver served this county in many ways for many years, and we are saddened to hear of his passing. And with that, I would invite everyone to join me in a moment of silence, if you please. Will please rise? We thank you very much. George was one of a kind, a unique individual. I know that's a shock, but yes. As we get going into our meeting, our next quarter would be the pledge of allegiance and invocation, and invite everyone to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Horton, if you would be so kind as to leave us in an invocation?
Bow our heads and pray. Laura, we come before you today asking for your blessing and guidance during this meeting. God direct us to do what's best for the citizens to consider what they tell us and plan and develop this county the way it should be. Laura, we also ask that you bless the family of our former colleague, George Weaver. We certainly will miss him as a friend. We ask that you take us home safely tonight, that we may come back at the next appointed time. These things we ask from your holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Karen. By way of introduction to my far left is Mr. Steve Rollins, representing the Manukai District. To my immediate left is Dr. Carol Horton, representing Port Royal. I'm Bob Schwartz, representing Bowling Green District. To my immediate right is Mr. Richard Williams, representing Western Carolina. To his right is Mr. J.D. Young of Reedy Church. And on the far right is Mr. Lee Tingler, representing Madison County, Madison County, Madison. I was thinking of the movie. Yeah. All right. Commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes from our October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting? If you've had a chance to read those, are there any additions or corrections?
Hold on, pause for a second. On page number, I guess, page number five, where Mr. Young said the amendment is saying twenty feet travel away at six inches of gravel, there would be, there would fifteen feet. It looked like something else needs to be in that census. I think there would be fifteen feet on each side. I mean, it's not a big thing, but it's, I don't know if another word needs to go there.
To be grammatically correct.
And on page number seven, but paragraph maybe six, where it says, Mr. Williams A.I.D. I think that should be, Mr. Williams said that he believed H. And that's all I saw.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Any further additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes with the two corrections for the record.
And I would second that.
Motion by Mr. Young, seconded by Mr. Williams to accept with the amendments as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. I neglected to introduce Mr. Leon Hughes, our planning director, Mr. Craig Pennington, our planner, Mr. Brad Robinson, our zoning administrator, and Mr. Max Flaven, the county attorney, keeping our son the square. Any unfinished business?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. There is some unfinished business. At our last meeting, we had considerable discussion regarding the standards for Section Eight exemptions and related to access drive and what materials that drive should consist of. And so staff, we went back and had some conversations and some discussions, ran through several scenarios that could potentially happen related to family divisions. And we finally concluded that it's probably best to have the access drives remain gravel. And we provided some alternatives for the material that could be used in preparation of those driveways. And so if you look on, in your packet and on your screen, you will see that down under, what was H? Talked about the creation of three or more, no, the creation of three or more lots requires the access drive for the lots to be constructed with a base of six inches of number twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-one A stone, with the entrance paved for twenty-five feet from the edge of the public road. And so there was a considerable amount of discussion about the access to the driveway, if it got more than three. And we find this just kind of simplifies it and eliminates enforcement issues related to the timing of when lots are created. And so all of the driveways would have a standard. And then building in a little flexibility with the three types of stone that can be placed gives the citizens some options there. Those three types of stone, twenty-one A is the largest, twenty-five is very similar, twenty-six is a little bit smaller. But the flexibility it provides is that they can range in cost depending upon availability and, you know, where you buy it from. So you could shop and get a little bit better price on the stone, potentially. So I feel like those were the largest items that were a part of the discussion. We did also add some language to clarify, you know, when the road maintenance agreement had to be approved to form by county, we also added some language that if you turn over to K, scroll down to K, we added some language there that the easement can't be extended to other lots. So scenario being, if I have two adjacent properties, one does not have an existing easement to, let's say, the rear of that lot, that property owner cannot use an existing easement to gain access to the rear of that lot. And so I feel like that's another way to reduce the number of, you know, units that show up on a private driveway. That lot would have to have its own access. Now, does that create an additional curb cut on the road? It potentially does, yes. But it does kind of eliminate or help reduce the opportunity for, you know, many subdivisions kind of popping up on, you know, unimproved roads, which is ultimately out into the future would be a issue. So, so I think those were the most significant changes. We've added some language about notes that need to be on the plat, that it needs to have a, the plat needs to contain an easement for emergency vehicles. That's in Q. And I believe those were the most significant items that we discussed previously and that we felt like the language could be a little bit tighter as we brought it back. So just the old adage of, if you work on something enough times, you'll always find something to change and make it a little bit stronger. And so that's why that additional language was there. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, got it. So I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So each lot has got to have their fifty-foot right-of-way, correct? And if there's more than three lots created, then each one must have a six-inch base for the first twenty-five feet. Is that what it says?
No, if there are more than three lots created, you have to do essentially a low-volume entrance. So you would have to pave from the edge of right-of-way into the driveway for twenty-five feet.
So you can have a low-volume entrance to all three lots?
Yes.
Okay. And then if it's just one lot, they can do a three-inch base?
Yes.
Okay.
Essentially a driveway.
Yeah. But if it's going to have heavier use, that it needs more gravel is what you're saying? All right, makes sense.
Mr. Hughes, do we have a specific road maintenance agreement template that? Okay.
Well, we're going to do that at some point, that they have to?
I'm not so sure that that's necessarily a one-size-fits-all document. You know, there will be different provisions that apply to different situations. And so our only requirement is that it be approved to form by the county attorney. So, you know, the attorney will review it and make sure that there, that it's, that it doesn't have any potentially loopholes or pitfalls that could, you know, be injurious to the county or, you know, someone else down the road.
I remember now what we said, somewhere in here, I think, was something that that it should be maintained or something like that. Didn't we say something like that?
Yes.
But there was no specifics. We just didn't want, you know, a mud hole. Because like you say, emergency vehicles have to get to these homes.
Do H and K conflict with each other? If each unit has to have its own fifty-foot wide easement, but if H, three or more lots require access, first twenty-five feet be paved, do each of them have to be paved?
No, no. So the single access easement is going to serve all three.
Got it.
So you have a single access easement of fifty feet. The pavement is just from where that driveway intersects the public street.
Right. But K says each lot must be served by its own easement.
Right. I think technically in the way, in the English language, yeah, it would mean there'd be three separate easements, but that's not, happens in practice.
Okay. As long as there's not a conflict, then it's going to create a whole bunch of, okay.
No, no, I understand how that language could be, how it reads.
So you are saying we still need a, each lot will still have this standard entrance going into that future roadway, correct?
If I understand your question correct, yes. So if there's an easement and there's a one lot, two lot, three lots, yes, each one of those lots would have an access to that easement. Is that your question?
Access to that easement, but would those, would that drive going into that lot be the same standard as the standard for the main road coming in?
No.
Okay, why wouldn't that be that way? Because eventually if we get four or more, then they're going to have to go back because that's going to be a road, correct? Eventually, if it, if it grows to become a road, now you have individuals driving from those lots onto a main road.
Okay, I think I understand your question now. Your question is, would the fourth lot be accessing the public road?
Well, all three of them would be accessing the public road if there's a fourth lot.
Correct.
Yes.
And then that's where you would install the low-volume commercial, the low-volume entrance. The pavement from, the twenty-five foot from the edge of pavement into the driveway.
Yes.
Yes.
So they would have to go back and upgrade that?
Yes.
Okay. That's only after the fourth lot.
That's only after the fourth one, right? Okay. Makes sense? Okay. That still would be a hardship, but it is what it is, yes.
But when you get four lots, you basically got subdivision.
Right, exactly, I'm with you, I'm good, I'm good. Okay.
And actually, the language reads three or more, so
Sure.
when you get to that third lot, that's when you're going to have to, yeah. Because technically, if someone came in and built a road to be that standards, then we could potentially accept that.
Right.
Because they will accept a road that serves three lots.
Okay.
Any further questions, commissioners? Mr. Williams? Oh, okay. It got a little complex, but Mr. Hughes, I want you and staff to know we do appreciate your diligence and working through and clearing up some of the muddy waters for us. Now, that being said, we have already conducted a public hearing on this issue, I believe, have we not?
Have.
We have. All right, so all we need to do at this point is conduct a vote. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So this would be a subdivision exception approval motion, if I'm reading my charts right. But we would not.
This, this would be a motion to accept the amendments to the subdivision ordinance as they were advertised and you held a public hearing.
Actually, I don't see the definition of family here. Is that part of this, or is that a separate agenda? Okay, understood, see.
On your, on your sheet there would be a text amendment motion.
Item, picking up item five A. Text amendment zero-four, twenty twenty-five?
No, 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 it's SO-oh-one, twenty twenty-five.
All right, sir. So this is a text amendment motion to SO-
Right.
Zero-one, twenty twenty-five.
It's a text amendment to the subdivision ordinance.
You need, do you need a motion, is that what you're?
Yes, ma'am.
So, whereas the public necessity convenience general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of text amendment SO-oh-one, twenty twenty-five, I recommend that SO-oh-one, twenty twenty-five be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
And I will second that motion. Motion by Dr. Horton, seconded by the Chair. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. This will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do we have any public hearings tonight on the remaining text amendment, zero-four, twenty twenty-five?
Actually, we do. Because at the last commission meeting, a section was not included in your packet. So the section that is listed there was not included in the packet, so it did not go forward in the appropriate manner. So tonight, we're just, we discussed it in a broader context, and it just relates to site plan and the amendments related to changes in the state code, where in this instance, it just removed planning commission and added the term subdivision agent. So that was the one change in this section. So we do want to hold a public hearing just so that all of it is buttoned up and done according to.
Mr. Pennington, if you'd be so kind as to read the protocol for the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the Chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hughes, is there any point in repeating the verbiage in five A? Do we need to read that into the record is what I'm getting?
Oh, the language here?
Yes, sir.
No, I was just going to point out that that is what the change is. So, I mean, more than what, I mean, we can certainly make note, I think, for the public, for the public's information, yeah.
All right, if we do not need to actually put it into the record and let it stand as it, as it's written, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, dispose of that. Public hearing regarding text amendment zero-four, twenty twenty-five is now open. Is there anyone wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anyone wishing to speak concerning this text amendment? Final notice, anyone wishing to speak regarding text amendment zero-four, twenty twenty-five? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is now closed.
So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Our screens up here aren't working. Which, which page are we on?
So it's the, I think it was the very last page in your packet. It's titled Division Four Plan Shopping Center Districts.
Those that we've already been through. That one? Okay, I see it now. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, there were a number of other amendments, but this particular section just didn't get included the last time.
Commissioners, after reviewing text amendment zero-four, twenty twenty-five as amended and presented to us, and there being no further questions of Mr. Hughes, is there a motion regarding this text amendment?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Whereas the public necessity convenience general welfare and good zoning practice warrants the approval of text zero-four, twenty twenty-five, I recommend that text zero-four, twenty twenty-five be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval.
As amended?
As amended.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Young. Is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. This text amendment, as amended, will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Item five B, staff is requesting a deferral regarding text, text amendment zero-five, twenty twenty-five. We will, I will make a motion that we defer this matter until our next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Motion by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Young. Commissioners, any discussion regarding this matter?
We got to do it next meeting.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it, this matter will be deferred until our next regular meeting. Any and all matters?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. So we would ask the commission to authorize an ordinance amendment to Section Fifteen, eight B Development Standards for Communication Facilities, in looking at changes to definitions related to communications facilities, it became apparent that the amendment needed to be much more significant than just amending the definition. Our current ordinance is not in compliance or performance with the state code as it relates to communication facilities. And so we just need to update that document in its entirety. So we are asking for authorization to do that so that we can bring that ordinance into the, into conformance with the code.
All right, so you're asking for a public hearing regarding the matter?
A text amendment, yes, related to Article Fifteen, Sections-
Eight, eight B.
Just-
Section eight B.
Just, Mr. Hughes is correct in the targeted section. I would recommend that the motion to initiate be as broad as just to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance in case we get into the definition section and a different article. That way, we're not limited to just Article Fifteen.
All right, so whatever areas he deems necessary, you know, that's fine with us. Commissioners, any comments? And sir, Mr. Hughes, do you want this? And sir, Mr. Hughes, do you want this? Deferral to be. Or this matter set for public hearing at a specific date or just open ended?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, there, there's a motion to. Authorize a public hearing to be set at a later date? I see our attorney getting up again.
The form of these motions to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance. Uh, need to contain those magic words that. Commissioner Horton read as part of her motion that the initiation is done in furtherance of. The general health, safety, welfare, and good zoning practice. And that is the basis of initiating the amendments to the ordinance to address these communication facilities.
Make me pull out a different sheet, aren't you?
So this, so this would be a text amendment motion? So the same thing she just did?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so whereas the public necessity convenience general welfare and good zoning practices wanted. The authorization of zoning ordinance text amendment. We recommend that it. We give authority to the zoning. To proceed with. That language or verbiage of that ordinance. Is that good?
I think we didn't note that it's related to communication facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this motion is authorized them to look at the zoning ordinance text amendment for communication facilities.
Motion by Mr. Rollins, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Tingler and Mr. Young. Any further discussion amongst the commissioners? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. So granted, sir. Any other matters?
I have a couple of things I was gonna ask Mr. Hughes. What is the possibility of us getting the current status of? Any approved data center that has been approved in the county as far as where they're at? When they plan on putting the shovel in the ground? It's like the grand, the, uh. The opening for the one we did today, you know, I only knew about it about a week ago. Prior to somebody wanting to break ground. So I was wondering if, if that's some information we could be provided on the ones that are approved, where they're in the process. Are they planning on breaking ground this year or next year or whatever? Could we get that information?
Sure, I can give it to you right now if you'd like.
Okay.
So the, the AWS site is under construction. Um, they had, they broke ground a couple of months ago. A lot of the infrastructure that they are working on. Um, right now is currently in Spotsylvania. You know, a lot of the sewer extensions, water and sewer extensions that have to come out of Spotsylvania, that part is under construction.
So that's a matter of need?
That's a matter of need.
Okay.
And of course, the one you're speaking of today is a Clean Arc site up at Bull Church Road and. Six thirty nine, they held a groundbreaking this afternoon. Um, they plan to start construction within the. Within the next couple of weeks. We have had a number of conversations where I met the, the construction crew and the project managers today. Um, so they're gonna go out and start installing. You know, their E and S measures and controls to begin construction. So that one is. You know, turning dirt is imminent there.
And that one got in by rights.
That was a by right, yes. And then the ACS site, which is the one behind Flying J. Um, they are. Any day now going to start construction. They have pulled all their permits and paid their fees to, uh. You know, site construction trailers on the site. And so I would say, you know. Any day now. You'll, there'll be activity on that site. So those are the three that are about to kick off. And those are the three that are, have gone through the site plan process and accounting.
And, and there are two more by rights that have applied or?
There are, there's one that has submitted a site plan. And. Oh, wait, yeah. Matan and Bazaar. Bazaar has Clean Arc as well, so I'd count that as one, but yeah. So the other one is Matan. They have a site plan that's in, in review. And the Clean Arc, the other side where the Bazaar physically set. That site plan is.
Uh, so Clean Arc actually has two, right?
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then McCann.
Matan.
Matan. That's the one near the McDonald's.
That's behind McDonald's on six thirty nine. Yes, ma'am.
Ladies Smith area.
Arby's.
Yep, where the Arby's is, is going in, where Taco Bell will be going in.
Where Wendy's won't be going in.
Where Wendy's won't be going in.
Oh, Chick-fil-A.
Okay, so I don't have my, I might have it though. So we're saying, we're saying that Clean Arc. Will have two sites. Now that site isn't part of the property that was discussed on Bull Church Road, is it? That's a different.
That's a different site. You talked about the rezoning yet. That, that site is south of where we were today.
Okay.
Directly south.
Okay, so McCain, so. Those McCain and the second Clean Arc site. They are, they're already approved. So all they got to do is, you said they got site plan, so there's no.
They have to get site plan approval. The Matan has to get site plan approval. The second Clean Arc site is not quite approved yet. It's close, but it's not done yet.
But I mean, there's no voting on those sites. They're, they're, all they gotta do is get the site plan approved and they're ready to break ground. That's what we think. Okay.
And, and that second one for Clean Arc is where you were physically today. That's their second site.
So where's the first one?
Across Bull Church Road. So.
Oh, where I can see off of ninety-five to the right when I'm going to Fred's Burg, I'll probably.
No. If you. When you came out of the Bazaar entrance today.
Okay.
If you would have made a right.
Okay.
Going, coming back towards Bowling Green. The very first intersection, probably not four hundred feet, is Bull Church Road. On that northeast corner is their other site.
Okay.
It's a hundred acres in there that was zoned M one back in the eighties, seventies or eighties.
Alright.
That's where, that's where, that's where they're going to. Do that site.
Okay. So that's the Ladies Smith Data Center. Is that the name of that one?
Uh, it's Clean Arc Part Two.
Do they call it Ladies Smith?
Uh, let's see. I got an old map, but I was just, I was looking at. I see the Bazaar Data Center, then across from that it says Ladies Smith Data Center. Bull Church Data Center, Good Earth, and Project North, unless they've changed their names. So it's five right there in that spot on this map that I have.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna pull it up right here, so you can see it.
Okay.
So where you were today. Is on the Bazaar, right where the cursor is. Put the cursor on the Bazaar? No. Okay, put, put it where the buildings are. Yes. So that's, that's the Bazaar.
Okay.
Okay. The field you were standing in was just across the Bazaar, we said, where it says Bazaar Road.
Right.
Right in there. That's where they did the groundbreaking today.
Right, okay.
Okay, that's the Bazaar site. Across Bull Church Road. There is Clean Arc Ladies Smith. If you, uh, correctly pull, go, no, go to Matan. Oh, no way, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. That's the Matan site that is directly behind the McDonald's.
Okay.
Zoom out a little bit. There we go. And that is the Bull Church. Data Center site right there.
So show me. Show me the clear, Clean Arc site and show me the Bull Church Road site that. Came to us and then they, they, they asked, they, uh, wanted more time. Where, so that's the Clean Arc, is that the?
No, that's Bull Church.
Okay, so that's the one that came to us, but they asked, they deferred or. Asked for some, pushed it back?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And that's the clean, that's the Bazaar site and then across.
Alright, give me the, give me the Clean Arc site, the one that, not the one that I was at today, but the other one.
Right there. So now, to be clear, that's the entire parcel, but not all of that land is zoned, and that was before data center. It's only the hundred acres where the cursor is right now.
So where's the school at?
The school is to the north, right, right there.
Okay. Alright.
Can you, uh, show us where the power lines run, sort of?
Yeah, so if you look. On the, see that line right there where the cursor is?
Uh huh.
That's an existing power line right there.
Okay.
Now they're gonna bring a second line into that site. As well, from the east.
They're gonna bring that line in. Along the same pathway as what is in existence, or they're gonna cut another path?
Some of it is new. It, it's a combination. Some of it will use existing corridor and there will be some new corridor. Where it comes off the line initially, the two thirty line that's further to the, uh, east. Yep, that one. That's the line that's to the east and it will, it's gonna originate on the south side of Ladies Smith Road. And kinda. Go west. But it's not necessarily within that existing corridor. It joins that existing corridor further to the east. But it is initially, it's in a new. Path as it comes off of the line. But it does eventually rejoin that existing corridor.
But we don't know where it's gonna intersect, do we?
Actually, actually, we do. I, I don't have those maps with us tonight, but we do know where it's going.
Okay. I have one more, one more question. Um, well, two more. So based on what we, I'm hearing right now, we, we know we're gonna have five data center campuses. At some point in time, that's already done deal. Okay, so my last que- so is that a way we can get? Um, what? Surrounding counties have as far as setback requirements for their data centers?
Sure.
Can we get that?
Sure. I can tell you Spotsylvania just amended theirs and Stafford just amended theirs. Stafford added a thousand foot setback and then Spotsylvania added a seven hundred and fifty foot setback.
Yeah, I knew about, about the seven fifty. So we could get that for. You know.
Yeah. How many do you want?
What is ours, second?
The a hundred feet.
Hundred feet, yeah.
With a forty foot undisturbed at the perimeter.
And all of these are grandfathered for that, correct?
That's a part of our PERC ordinance. That's an ordinance standard that we adopted. As part of the PERC ordinance.
Can we get like, can, could I see like five or six surrounding counties?
Sure.
What theirs are? Okay. That's all I have, sir. Chair.
I, if you like, I mean, if you are, it sounds like you wanna do some comparison. Do you wanna see their ordinances?
Yeah, I wanted, well, I would like to. I would like to see if maybe, if there's a time that we might wanna revise ours as far as setback requirements. To be in, in comply, you know, to be somewhere near where the other counties are. Cause I know the last, um. The last group that came in front of us, I think the lady that lived by that car wash, she was, you know, was talking about how close it was gonna be. That hundred feet was gonna be to her residence. And I don't know if that's something that. With the rest, remaining properties that we have in the county that qualifies for data centers. Well, now it's maybe the time to look at that before something else approved.
So one thing I would say, you know, we did amend our ordinance, so now data centers are not by right. They have to go through the special exception process. And you are, through that process, you can impose conditions on SUPs. So, and, and I would say, you know, every case should be looked at its own merits. And so, you know, you may have a case where. A significant setback is appropriate. You know, an increased setback because there may be some adjoining residential or nearby residential. And that would certainly be an appropriate place to consider some additional relief to those residents. You may have other places where if they're sighted appropriately, and as we've intended towards, you know, as we've identified in our PERC districts. Then there's gonna be some already natural. Uh, buffers in there because of the areas that we've identified as appropriate. They're not very densely populated. It may be appropriate that you have one side of the property, let's say. Has some residential properties that are a little bit closer. Maybe you wanna have an increased setback there. So you, you have a tool at your disposal right now that gives you quite a bit of flexibility. Um, as you look at each case individually.
Okay, okay.
We don't have any more by rights sites, do we?
No, ma'am.
Commissioners, anything further?
I will say you will see a case next month. For an SCP on Driver Ridge Road.
Well, Mr. Hughes, on behalf of the commissioners. Just wanna thank you and staff for all the work y'all have been doing. And we, we sincerely wish y'all a very happy Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving. And a prosperous Thanksgiving. So, again, thank you for all y'all have done. You, you work, you help us work through some problems.
Well, thank you.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn to our December the eighteenth, twenty twenty five meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Young.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins and everyone else. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned until December the eighteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty PM. Thank you one and all.
Peace out.